Hey, how you doing? How y'all doing?
Carl.
Still got a minute?
It's five o'clock.
I wish you had stayed a little longer. We would have had to spit that road money up in about four weeks.
I thought that's all we were gonna do anyway.
No roof, no.
How you doing, Mr. Chancellor?
I'm doing well, here.
How you doing there, our attorney?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir, don't worry.
We ready? Okay, Sly, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Let's call the meeting order then. Being our November the fifteenth meeting, we're gonna ask that everyone, uh, please put your phones on silent as I am doing now. We're gonna ask that our supervisor, Gerald Sting, lead us in the prayer. Sly, you can lead us in the. Okay.
Let us pray. Father, again, Lord, we come to you, Lord, just thanking you for you, for what you have done for us, Lord, the day and this week. It's, uh, Father, we just ask for your blessings upon this county, Lord, if we make decisions, Lord, to move the county forward. But, Father, we pray for our country, Lord, and our nation. Father, that your healing hand would be upon decision-makers, Lord, as they make decision to see what's best for our country. But, Father, we just thank you for our veterans, Lord, that has gone and fought for us, Lord, for our freedom, Lord, something that we could never repay, Father, but we thank them, Lord, and we ask that you continue to have your hand upon them, Father. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. There's you going. Really? Okay, Mr. Chancellor.
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the November the first twenty-one board minutes. Excuse me, if I could talk. I would ask there are no changes, to please approve said minutes.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second on the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I say aye also. It's two and three of the time. Okay, what do we have?
Mr. President, the first person on the agenda, Hattie Mathias, did not respond when I called her name. So, the first concerned citizen is Patrick Marion.
Okay. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Yes, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, uh, I have a concern about, uh, uh, property taxes that, uh, I would, uh, charge back. Back, what do they call it, back charge? Dealing with filing homestead in two counties. And what had happened was that, uh, in two thousand seventeen November, my mother passed away at our res- uh, owned a home in, uh, Bobbit County. And, uh, so the house was left to heirs among myself and five siblings. And at the time, uh, after her death, my older brother was supposed to be, uh, handling things at that home with the sister, myself. Uh, rid of myself and my other brother, who passed in two thousand twenty, was the financial backbone for it. So, things weren't going, weren't being taken care of. So, in two thousand nineteen, they voted for me to, uh, take head of the home. So, what I did was, I went to Bobbit County, to the Tax Assessor Office, and told them that I was gonna be, uh, in charge of the home. And the lady I talked to, I told her that, uh, I live in Ridgeland and that by me living in Ridgeland and by doing homestead on that home. And she told me that, uh, well, the bottom line was, she told me that I could, uh, file homestead on that because my wife was filing homestead at the house, uh, in Ridgeland, where she one hundred percent veteran. So, you know, we get exempt from taxes here on the home in Ridgeland. Been here paying tax on that home for, uh, twenty-some years, twenty-two, twenty-three years. And I, all this was, uh, told to her by me. And I did not know that I was making a mistake at the time and that, uh, she, listen to her, I should have verified through the Mass County Tax Office. But, anyway, I ended up filing homestead there. And I got a call early part of this year from a young lady from the, uh, the Mass County Tax Office. And I think her name, Ms. Jean, the one in, uh, on, uh, fifty-one in Mass. So, she said, Patrick, uh, you filed a homestead for the year of two thousand and twenty at a property in Madison. So, when she explained to me what was going on, so she asked me where that I want to find my homestead at, I said, oh, it's causing a problem. I want to, uh, keep my filing right here because I didn't want to lose the exemption here. Uh, if I think about it, you paying zero taxes here compared to paying maybe a nine-hundred to a thousand dollar tax on the home up there. So, through her and then through the Bobbit County Tax Assessor Office, Property Tax Office, whatever, we, uh, told them that I wanted to keep my homestead here in Madison. So, I had to do a letter stating that, uh, I did not want to file homestead exemption in, uh, Bobbit County no more. Uh, I thought everything was good because they told me everything had been rectified, everything in both end, on both end. Matter of fact, the lady in Bobbit County told me that I would have to pay six hundred dollars taxes down there at that time. And, uh, we're supposed to pay it before this year is up. And, uh, so what happened was when she told me that, I said, okay, fine. So, I'm thinking that everything was fine. Then August came, I received a letter from Mr. Running Lot about that, uh, they had a thing from the Revenue Office. I ain't none, I ain't understand, I don't know nothing about it. I'm ignorant to that and I apologize for being ignorant to that, to what was going on. But, anyway, he was saying that, uh, I had to pay, uh, what did the word that he used? Back charge or something for two thousand twenty. So, I'm thinking that by me had talked to who, that I had already talked to both Bobbit County and Mass, that I was fine. But, I kind of found out Friday, I received a letter through the mail from Ms. Kate Price. I owe three thousand dollars for, uh, two thousand twenty. And they had that, also had that, uh, no, she didn't have a lot of that. So, it's two thousand twenty. So, then I immediately started calling. I called Madison Tax Office in, uh, the one on fifty-one, talked to Ms. Jean again. And when she looked through the computer, she said, Mr. Mayor, everything had been rectified, you know? They had been resolved and everything. So, she didn't understand why I was getting the three thousand payment. So, she told me, she gave me a number. I called so many people Friday. And anyway, I had ended up talking to the, she told me to call the, uh, the Mass County Tax Office in Ken. So, later I talked to there. She told me what was going on. That she has, that when she explained to me, she said, uh, although you filed the taxes exemption, I mean, homestead exemption in Bobbit County, your wife automatically, always because you're being married, automatically, you know, with you as for your tax, property tax. So, that's how the, uh, this problem came about. I'm under pressure that my wife filing in Madison County, I could file in Bobbit County, not knowing that when I filed in Bobbit County, it's all, it automatically kicked Madison exemption out because they explained to me that the last place that you file at is the place where your taxes, property taxes would go to, with the Bobbit County. If I had have known that, I'd never done that right there, and I apologize for knowing that. So, anyway, she told me to call the Revenue Office. So, I called the Revenue Office and she explained, and she broke the whole scenario down to me, how everything go. And, uh, if I had have known that it wasn't rectified, I would have responded to Mr. Lot's letter and tried to rectify it back in August when I got his letter. And now, I'm stuck with, uh, three thousand dollars for property tax for two thousand twenty in, uh, Madison, in Madison County. So, the lady at the Revenue, she told me to, uh, go before the Board of Supervisors, that's why I'm here today, and try to see can we get something resolved on this right here.
Okay. Can you invite me to, Chancellor?
Well, Admiral Norman Kennedy, uh, could not be here, so he provided me this information. Uh, that he filed homestead in Madison County, two thousand and five. It was amended to, uh, disabled in two thousand fifteen. In two thou- in two thousand nineteen, they filed homestead in the airship property in Bolivar County. Uh, June twenty twenty-one, the Department of Revenue issued a chargeback letter for the year two thousand twenty due to the homestead filed in multiple counties. In Paperlink, it was discovered in June twenty twenty-one, an email conversation between Emily, I believe, from the Tax Collector's, Tax Assessor's Office and Bolivar County Deputy, where she agreed to provide documentation to Bolivar County so that they could, so that the Marion's homestead account could be deleted from their system. In Fall of two thousand twenty-one, not sure of the date, the Tax Collector's Office issued a tax statement to the Marion's for parcel based on the chargeback for two thousand twenty based on a ten percent assessment. As far as our involvement, we mailed the letter in August. Uh, we didn't receive a reply. And the Board had approved all these chargebacks in October. But, on eleven, twelve, twenty-one, he contacted the, uh, Tax Assessor's Office, hoping to speak to someone regarding the statement he received for the property. And upon discovery, the statement was a two thousand twenty chargeback issued when the DOR discovered that they had filed homestead in Bolivar County and in Madison County. They reassessed ten percent on this statement. They had filed Madison, I've already covered that, Madison, two thousand and five, and homestead in Bolivar in two thousand and nineteen on air property. So, it's just, you know, Department of Revenue, even though my name is on it, Department of Revenue is actually sending out these letters. But, uh, ultimately, I guess the Board has the authority to override their decision on approving the chargeback. Uh, I don't, I believe it was a mistake, as he says. And, uh, I don't want to punish someone for something that they made a mistake on. So, I, 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 that's really all the information I have to offer to you.
Okay. Can he file homestead or air property?
You can file, but only in one place.
And if you, are you asking me?
Yeah.
So, we know you can't file homestead on two different homes, you know that.
I know that now.
Can he file?
I know it now.
So, that's the first thing.
Yes, sir.
On, uh, I heard you say that the Bolivar County property was air property.
Yeah.
You're in control of the, so if your parents die without wills and the property is sent to the heirs, I guess you would nominate to be the leader of the heirs.
Yes, sir.
But why'd you file homestead exemption? Are you doing it for, I mean, who lives in Bolivar? You shouldn't have filed that at all.
That's why I went to them to ask question about it since I was taking on. And you're right, and I'm not disputing that. I promise you, she was, she knew that I lived in Ridgeland. And, uh, it's, it's.
Was she?
Whoever lady helped me that day, sir, I prom- yes, sir, I can't, I can't remember.
There was a lady in Bolivar County.
Yeah, in Bobbit County, I'm sorry. Lady in Bobbit County.
Yeah.
She, I told her that I had a home in, uh, Ridgeland. That house is, is basically like a family house. And I, I goes up there and stays there for holidays when I go for holiday or any type of visitation in Shelby. That's where the house is at, in Shelby, Mississippi. That's my home. But, uh, on my mother and father's grave, if she had never told me that I could do it because my wi- I didn't know that we were going to vote, because my wife wasn't even with me when I filed down there.
I think it's, it's true that the wife was the name of the homestead exemption application in Madison County. And the records reflect that another application was made in another county. It's gonna go to another county.
Right, yeah.
What Madison did was correct. Uh, what you did was not correct. So, so, uh, what you said was a mistake.
I'm, I promise, I made a mistake, I didn't know.
My opinion, what Bolivar County done, they shouldn't have accepted his application.
They shouldn't have. But are they supposed to investigate it?
Be perfectly honest.
If he makes the application, I suppose accept it, is that's what he meant?
If, you know, if I went to another county, bought a piece, bought a house, and I decided I'm gonna file, that this is my house now, I'm gonna file homestead, then it's up, it's incumbent on me to come back to Mass County and say, look, I've changed homestead, some, yeah.
It was your mistake.
I, I admit it was my mistake, not knowing what I should have known when I found out Friday.
Yeah. Is there any legal assistance that we could give to help him some on his taxes? That's the question. That's, that's what he's here for.
Yes, sir, I know. Well, I mean, uh, we know that Mass County didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess you could, well, I don't want to guess. I'd rather look into it, honestly.
Mm-hmm.
You might, you might be able to forgive this, you know? But, but I'm not certain, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, but I don't want to do anything, just, uh, you know, you know, Chancellor said we had certain authorities, but at the same time, um, we hadn't done anything.
But we forgive things when it's a mistake on the county side. It doesn't appear that the county made a mistake. Appears that applicant made a mistake. And, uh, that's what I hear.
Well, I'd, I'd be wanting to just ask you and, and because it's not like we're gonna go out there and take his house from him in the next two, couple of weeks. I want you to just look into this.
Okay.
See what, see what the legal, uh, answers are before we go and, and just make a decision one way or the other. Okay. All right.
Can I say anything? Can I say something else?
Uh, we intend to ask our attorney to look into this. And that means we'll bring it back up on our December first Monday meeting in December at nine a.m.
I, I need to be here?
Yeah, because we need, we need to know what legal ground we stand on, whichever way we decide on this.
You have living relatives, your sisters and brothers are living, your heirs to the Bolivar County property.
Yeah, I just only have one brother that died in, uh, twenty, the other, other four are still living. Uh, I have one that lives in Shelby. And one in Ohio, one in Texas, and one in Cleveland, Mississippi. And, uh, I would also like to say that I apologize. I was just ignorant to the fact of what was happening. And, uh, and I do take responsibility, that was my mistake, not knowing I made a mistake.
Okay. But we understand, so, um, that we will, we will revisit this on the first Monday in December and so that we can have our legal questions answered.
That'd be December the sixth.
President, do you want the attorney to answer this question outside of the meeting? Do you want the attorney to answer the question outside of the meeting?
Well, uh, that's, that's up to the boat.
Okay, I think they're asking you to be back on December sixth.
Yeah.
December sixth. At nine a.m. December sixth.
Nine a.m. on December sixth.
Okay.
December Monday. Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
Yes, sir. All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more concerns, sis? Um, I'm thinking so. We got one here that I don't think is here. I hope. No more concerns, citizens? Okay, so, we can go to the consent items, gentlemen and ladies.
Uh, motion on consent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have consented. Supervisor Gerald Sting, District Three.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I appreciate this being under, under my name. We have one polling place that we're going to move in District Three. And the polling place currently is located at three fourteen Victory Christian Church. I'm sorry, that's, three fourteen is not the address, that's precinct number.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, we are, that church or that building has been sold. And so, we, uh, look for another location, District Three, Election Commissioner Pat Truesdale and herself. And we have agreed, got an agreement with Ridgecrest Baptist Church. They're on Old Canton Road, which is probably four, five hundred yards up above the current location.
Okay.
And they have agreed to be a polling place for us. So, this is a lease agreement for, for them and us to be a polling place, uh, for that, for that, uh, location. So, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion for approval for the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Since you're on the supervisor, I got one there.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint, uh, Martha Harris and Ms. White. Okay, take her first name, uh, to the Camden Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll second your motion, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, I would like to add, uh, also that they, those people that are voting in that precinct will be receiving some information through mail saying that there is a change in polling places as well.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate your help on this too, Pat, as well. Thank you.
Okay. That's good, good, good. Okay, uh, let's move on to business items. Darren, one. Okay, Darren. Wagon Engineering, broadband, that's a good subject.
Good evening, Board. At this time, I'd like to give a brief update on the broadband initiative that we've been, Wagon Engineering has been working on, uh, with Madison County. Uh, since we began, uh, this, this process, uh, our planning area, we're focusing on the northeastern, uh, portion of, or section of Madison County. And so, when we submitted our task order, the task order that was initially approved for this effort, uh, consisted of a scope of work that was broken down into three particular phases. Uh, the first phase, which is what we're currently doing, conducting a broadband assessment. Uh, the second phase was to assist the county, uh, with the procurement of a third-party vendor uh, that would potentially come in and own, operate, and maintain the broadband facilities. And the third phase would be actual program implementation, which would include design for installation of the actual, uh, physical broadband facilities. Uh, since our scope of work, uh, was approved and as we move forward with this Phase One assessment, uh, we just wanted to give an update on what some of our, what our accomplishments have been up to this date. Uh, so, what those things have, having been inclusive of have been mapping the service points within, uh, the planning area, which we use those service points that we mapped to create, uh, potential cabling paths and conceptual, for conceptual design development and deployment of potential alternatives, uh, with the broad, with broadband cabling. Uh, we've also completed what we defined in our scope as a construction ride-out, which is another, uh, term for a constructibility review. And so, this was basically, um, a boots-on-the-ground effort where we put our resources out in the field and we rode every road, we, we drove every road uh, within the, the planning area, roughly about three hundred and fifty miles. And in that, during that assessment, uh, we were looking at things, uh, that would, uh, have an impact on, uh, the alternatives for the deployment of broadband. So, we were looking at things that may be within the right-of-way that would, uh, impede the possibility of deploying, um, buried cable. And we were also looking at, uh, right-of-way conditions and pole conditions in terms of existing poles for deploying aerial cable, uh, which would be inclusive of attaching, uh, cable to existing, uh, poles in the area. So, in those, during this, um, pre-construction ride-out, um, another alternative in, in terms of buried cable or aerial cable, uh, there would be a, there's a potential option, third alternative, which would be a hybrid, which consists of both buried, uh, cable and aerial. So, basically, you would be looking at, uh, potentially three alternatives, uh, in this area in terms of broadband, uh, deployment. And so, based on what we've seen so far, you would be looking at, um, possibly a hybrid option, which would be suitable for the area from what we've seen so far. So, that would mean half, half of the area, uh, is suitable for buried cable, half of the area, uh, is suitable for aerial cable deployment. So, with that, um, in terms of the buried cable, uh, deployment, there's actually three options that the county can consider for buried cable deployment, which would include or would consider directional bore for installing the cable. Uh, you can also look at open trench, uh, open trench method for deploying the cable. And you could also look at a, um, plowing method for deploying the cable in terms of, uh, the buried alternative. So, what we're leaning towards or what, uh, one of our recommendations would could, would possibly be is looking at the, for the buried cable, looking at, uh, either, uh, plowing method or, uh, open trench method. Uh, those methods, uh, would be suitable and they could potentially save the county, uh, some funds in terms of those particular methods. So, what we, uh, want to do today, uh, we also, uh, would like to ask that the Board of Supervisors consider, uh, approving, uh, our budget for Phase Two, uh, of this project, which is assisting the county with the procurement of a third-party, uh, vendor. And so, uh, like I stated before, our first task order, although we included the budget for all three phases, uh, included the scope for all three phases, I'm sorry, we did not include the budget for all three phases. We only focused on Phase One, which is the assessment. So, at this point, um, we would like to request to move forward with Phase Two. And the reason why we're before you today to request for Phase Two is we have identified some other potential, uh, funding sources for broad, to support the broadband initiative through, uh, the USDA. Uh, they have a program that is called the Reconnect Program. And there are several, uh, opportunities or three options, that the county could potentially take advantage. that the county could potentially take advantage of in terms of this particular program. And so as it relates to the, the application process, they will open up the opportunity to begin submitting applications November the twenty-fourth through February twenty-second. And so in order for the county to potentially be in position to take advantage of these funds, one of the key things to apply for this grant is, would be for the county to know who the third-party vendor or third-party provider would be for this particular broadband. So we, so therefore, to make sure that we would be in position to submit an application and know who that third-party vendor is, we would request to move forward with that actual second phase of the project.
Derek, a question. This information that you asked for today, wouldn't we also need the same information if we go and ask for money from the state also?
Yes, the information that'll come out of the assessment, once we finish the assessment, yes, that would be information that you could utilize for a requesting funds from the state, you know, planning.
USDA or?
Opera funds or whatever the county decides in terms of what direction you go in.
Derek, from my understanding, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Yeah, from my understanding is that this forty-three thousand would get us vendor or vendors that is capable of servicing that area, also with a quote, what, what they have proposed to do or to service that area. Is that correct?
Yes, where, where our, our assessment will give you, will give, provide the county with estimated costs for construction, for, for building this out. And so once we go to the, or proceed with putting a R F P on the street for the third-party vendor, that would be something that, as we reach the end of that process, that was something, be something that eventually that potential provider would provide
Right.
as a part of their response. But that, that would be something, you know, in terms of the requirements of that R F P, that would be our first step, would be to sit down with the county and make sure we identify and include all of the information that we need from these potential respondent.
But, but it could be more than one vendor.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
It could be three or four vendors.
Right. And we, and we do believe that there are some vendors out there that are interested in, like I said, owning, operating, maintaining, or if the county decides to, to lease it to a vendor. But we do believe there are some out there that are interested.
Okay.
Up on that, I make the motion to approve the request on number six of the forty-three thousand dollar.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it with the understanding. What kind of timeframe we looking, looking at doing this, getting this info back, Derek?
From the assessment?
Yes.
Right now, we, we've set a deadline for ourselves for Friday to have that information ready for our further internal review. So I'll say about early next week, we'll have something to the county.
Is it Friday?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm talking about as far as the vendors.
The procurement process, you're looking at least about a three-month timeframe.
Okay, because it doesn't need to be any later than that.
Right, that's right, correct.
Because, you know, for us to go and look for monies elsewhere.
Yes, sir.
It, it doesn't need to be any later than that.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good question. I know it is a three a month, possible three-month deal.
Yes, sir.
It's what, November, December, January?
You're looking at the end of February.
So I, so let me back up. For the procurement process and advertising R F P, I guess that process alone roughly is about forty-five days. Just from experience, so
Right.
receiving the proposals, reviewing those proposals and, and making a recommendation. So three months may be a stretch. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it just, because if we're going to look for monies elsewhere, we just need it as soon as possible. And we do need this part to be able to go in and fill out applications and be able to go in and look at other, other sources.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and thank you.
Motion second.
And motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Honey, good to see you. All right.
Yeah, good to see you, honey.
Good evening.
Oh, evening, Tina.
First item I got for you is the compiled list of the two thousand twenty-two road plan. This was compiled from all the roads that you all submitted.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve this road plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second, and we're talking about?
The one that's on the, no, that's on.
The one that's on the agenda.
On the agenda for, uh, Tim.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Tim, I do want to come up and sit down with you on, and look at this road plan a little bit closer, okay?
Okay. Next item I have is supplemental agreement one.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got another motion, you're going too fast.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Next, I want to make a motion that we split the six million dollars up in basically five ways. There will come out one point two million dollars per supervisor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Now you can go ahead.
Okay, now, I just want to make sure. All right, next item I have is supplemental agreement number one to the contract to Neil Schaefer. This is for the Catlet Roads Improvement Project. This is for the next phase. This is for maps and deeds in order to purchase right-of-way, and they'll also to support the right-of-way acquisition agent.
Motion.
I'll second that one. All in favor?
Aye.
How long you think it's going to take on this?
On the right-of-way? I wouldn't think it's going to take very long. We've got seven parcels, I believe, so.
Who's the engineer?
About seven months.
Neil Schaefer's the engineer on this one.
Yeah, Neil Schaefer's the engineer. I was just wondering how long it might take before we, we can ride on it.
Well, it's got a two thousand twenty-four obligation from the Fed, so it'd be in two thousand twenty-four, unless we can get that money pushed up through the M P O a little, little more.
Okay.
All right, and the last board meeting, I asked for, or I had an agenda item to purchase a truck. And by the time that I, in between the quote and getting it before you guys, they, they sold my truck. So with the climate like it is at car dealerships, I'm asking that the board authorize the purchase of a vehicle up to forty-five thousand and to authorize the purchasing clerk to select the lowest and best quote from those received.
Get a motion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So you're asking us to approve it before you buy it?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're asking us to do?
I'm asking for the, the ability to spend up to that amount of money.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only reason is because if I don't, I'll never get one, because they sell them so quick.
I understand. I just want to make sure I understand what you was asking.
That's what you was asking, yeah. But at the same time, you know, make sure you get the lowest quote.
Sure, and I, I hope to get one much lower than that, but want to give us a little wiggle room.
You'll bring it back in front of the board.
Well, that's, that's the sticking point. If I don't issue the purchase order right then, I'm going to lose the truck again.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can do that, but just, just bring it back.
Bring it back before the board when I have the actual, okay.
Yeah, just we'll, we'll have it in the minutes.
Yeah, you just acknowledge that it was done.
We'll take care of that.
Okay.
All right. Next item I have is the request for approval of final plat of Whisper Ridge, Part Two. This is a mobile home community off of Whisper Ridge Road. It's the second phase of it. There is no public infrastructure in this.
Can we get a motion?
What district is it?
That's mine, that's mine. A little behind, so I'm a quarter.
Oh, that's Whisper Ridge?
Yeah.